Are you ready? Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the January 23 Committee of a Whole Meeting, and if the clerk could please call the role.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Spatterford.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Seven members present, you have a call.
Thank you, we now move to the minutes of the January 9 meeting. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I'd move the January 9 Committee of the Whole Minutes as written.
All right, those minutes have been moved, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed passes unanimously. This is an opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment, please come up to the podium and give us your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Loretta Stanaway, and I'm here tonight to thank the judges and the council and the new prosecuting attorney for being willing to step forward in a way that I think will benefit the city as a whole, the county actually as a whole, and to let this new prosecutor know that he has the support of the public, and I believe also the judges and the council, and therefore I hope to see very bold and strong action on his part to return our city to a better quality of life, which is achieved by putting criminals where they belong and not letting them loose on the public, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one. First on the agenda is the Incan County Prosecutor, who is not here yet. We might wait a minute or two, because I think if we start the process of the internal auditor, then we'll be into that, so if we could have your patience for a couple of minutes, colleagues will wait a couple of minutes, and then if not, if he isn't here, then we'll start with the external auditor. Okay, I think what we'll do is go ahead and get started, and then we'll invite the external auditor and the finance director forward. We have Bill Tucker and Tyler Baker. If you could please come up through the well and take a seat at the table. Councilmembers in your packet, you do have a presentation from the auditor. And gentlemen, if you would please make sure that the green light is on, press the button down there for the light to come on. Okay, good, all right. And what we'll do is we'll open it up to you, we'll try to, unless we need some clarification, wait till the end to ask our questions. Having said that, we will turn it over to the finance director and our external auditors. And she's pointing at you, so you go ahead.
Go ahead, get started. Well, good evening, I'm Bill Tucker from Mayor Cust Harrison, and with me I have Tyler Baker, who is the manager on the audit engagement for this year. I'd like to start by just kind of walking through the information that was handed out to you in your packets, and then we'll get into the audit presentation itself. So there are a couple documents that we've handed out to you, just kind of roll through those documents. We do have our obviously large boundary report, this is the audit financial statements for June 30, 2022. Within this large document, you'll find all the necessary financial statements and no disclosures to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Also within that document, on pages 11 through 13, you would find the independent auditors' report as well, so we'll talk about that during our audit presentation for you tonight. We did also have a couple loose letters for you, I'll kind of just hold those up as I kind of go through them. We did have one that really didn't have a title at the top of it, this is what we consider to be our board communication letter or governance letter. A majority of that letter is boilerplate language, does go through and address some of the more significant estimates within the financial statements, for such things as useful lives of capital assets is a significant estimate. Also within that document, if there was ever any disagreements with management, that would kind of be noted within that letter to you as well, just to let you know there were none, but that is kind of the purpose of that letter, is to have that formal communication with council. We also did have another loose letter, this is what we consider to be our internal control letter, we do have that in our audit presentation as well, so we'll kind of go through that document with you tonight. So the next thing that we're going to go over is that audit presentation, I do see that is up on the screens, and we'll kind of click through those pages as we kind of go through them. The first page that we're going to turn to is your certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So the city of Lansing has received in the past the annual comprehensive financial report certificate of achievement and excellence in financial reporting. The one that is in the current year's financial statements is for June 30, 2021. You do submit that in again this year with the GF Way for the ACTFER certificate, so that is the first thing that we have in your document for you tonight. The next page that we have for you is that overview of the independent auditors' report. As I mentioned, the independent auditors' report is on pages 11 through 13 of those bound financial statements. The purpose of an audit is to provide opinion as to the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It's not to detect fraud, and it's not to give you an opinion on your internal controls. Within the independent auditors' report, we're providing our opinion on your financial statements, we're actually giving our opinion on the nine opinion units of the city. Those nine opinion units are the government activities, the business type activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund, in which the city had five major funds in 2022. Those five major funds were the general fund, the state and federal grant fund, the CIRA and MISHDA grant fund, the sewage disposal system fund, and the municipal parking system fund. And then the last opinion unit is the aggregate remaining fund information. We're providing unmodified or clean opinions on all nine of those opinion units, and that's the best opinion you conceive on your financial statements, is that unmodified clean opinion. That means that everything is in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. From there, we'll get into a couple of the highlights within the financial statements. The first pages that we're turning to is page 27 and 28 of those financial statements. This is your statement of net position. The statement of net position is a snapshot of your assets, deferred outflows of resources, liabilities, deferred inflows of resources, and net position at June 30, 2022. The statement of net position is presented on the full accrual basis of accounting, and brings all of your funds together, as a Gatsby 34 are reporting, and brings all your funds together into your primary governments, broken down between governmental activities and business type activities, and this was presented on the full accrual basis of accounting, so includes everything, including your capital assets, your long-term debt, your net pension liability, and your net other post-employment benefits liability as well, all on one page. On the very next page, page 28, does reference your net pension and your net other post-employment benefits liabilities. You see those totals there that are highlighted of 370, approximately 372 million for your net pension liability, and 248 million for your net other post-employment benefits liabilities. We do have a couple additional pages related to both of those pension and other post-employment benefits liabilities on the next couple pages for you, and these are really just to kind of give you an idea of where your pension plans are funded at, and your other OPEB plans are funded at as well. So the first page that we have for you, this is page 117, relates to your pension plan for your employees' retirement system. If we look at the far left column at June 30, 2022, for this specific plan, you have a total net pension liability of $158 million, and that is currently funded at 49% funded. You can see those trends over the last nine years, where that has seen fluctuations. Specifically in 2021, we saw a large fluctuation for investment returns, where obviously the market was doing really well in 2021, and then we see kind of that decrease in 2022 with where the markets are going, or have gone in 2022. So those are some of the big factors that we see within those couple years, and raises for some of those trends of where you're funded at last year at 56%, down to 49 in 2022. Moving through your pension plans, the next page that we're turning to is page 120. This is your police and fire retirement system, again looking at that far left column for your pension plan. That pension plan is funded at 57.55%, and has a net pension liability of $213 million. The next two pages relate to your other post-employment benefit plans. The first one is your employees' retirement system, again looking at that far left column, net OPEB liability of approximately $87 million, currently funded at 44%, down from last year, about 52% last year, so down to 44. And then again for your police and fire retirement system, on page 126, net OPEB liability of approximately $161 million, that is currently funded about 20, just over 20%, and that is down slightly from last year, where it was about 6, or 25% in 2021. So again, a lot of those impacts on those pension and OPEB plans really kind of related to the markets of what you're seeing there, you know, obviously good years in 2021 for investment returns, and then 2022, the returns were not as good. All right, from there, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler to kind of go through the rest of the slides with you, and I'll run the slideshow.
All good. So the next page we have is page 113, and this is the budget to actual page for the general fund. And again, as the front schedules that Bill discussed were on the full accrual, this is on the modified accrual basis of accounting, and so capital asset purchases or any debt purchases would be shown as expenses on this fund rather than on the balance sheet. And a couple items here that we have highlighted, you'll see the actual column, which is that third column, and then the far right is the variance between the final budget and the actual amounts. Positive balances are good, those are under budget for expenditures, and then negative would be over expenditures on a specific line item. What you see there, we have total revenues highlighted, actual total revenues for the general fund was at $146 million, which was just under $3.6 million over budget, which is a positive, and this is mainly due to intergovernmental revenues, state, federal grants. If you slide to the next page, 114, you'll see in the middle of the line there of total expenditures, this is the comparison again between final budget and actual in regards to total expenditures for the general fund, with a final amended budget of $147.3 million, with actual expenditures of just over $146 million. This is a positive variance of $982,000, or under a 1% variance, which is very good for the size of entity that you guys are at. You'll see towards the bottom of the page, the net change in fund balance, that third column, you'll see that the general fund decreased their fund balance by 6.3 million, but was a positive variance compared to what was anticipated with the final budget, which was a decrease anticipated of $11.2 million. With that decrease, fund balance in total decreased from $29.7 million to $23.4 million, or approximately 16% of total budgeted expenditures. State guidelines say a minimum of approximately 15 to 20% fund balance for the general fund, which you guys being at 16 is right in that minimum kind of threshold. The next three pages are in graph form of five-year trends, and this first bar graph is the general fund for the last five years in total revenues, expenditures, and then fund balance. So you can see that drop in fund balance from 2021 to 2022 is that yellow bar, and the main driver of that, as you can see, were a decrease of expenditures in 2021, as activities opened up, as expenditures kind of incurred in 2022, that then jumped up, causing that fund balance to then rise, or the expenditures to rise above the revenue, causing that fund balance to decrease. But a good kind of visual representation of the total revenues, total expenditures for a five-year trend. The next page is the current allocation of where the total revenues and other financing sources come from in regards to the general fund, with the two largest being property taxes, which make up approximately 32%, which is that dark blue in the top right, and then income taxes, which is the bottom right red quadrant at approximately 25%, and with the prior year, all of these percentage are within 1% of the prior year allocation as well. The next page, you'll see the same type of representation, but in regards to total expenditures and other financing uses. That bottom right quadrant is the public safety, making up the vast majority of the expenditures of 59% in the current year. Prior year, that was 61%, but still very consistent overall with all of the different categories. That top right quadrant being general government was the second largest expenditure category in regards to the general fund. This next page, what we have highlighted in that top paragraph, where it says current year deficiencies of debt, this is to point out the current refunding in the current year, or the refunding that occurred in the current year. That highlighted number, the second line from the bottom, states that the city decreased its total debt service requirements over the life of the bonds by $469,000, which is a positive, with a net economic gain of $326,000 as well. So because of that refunding, in total decreased the required debt principal and interest payments by just under $470,000. The next page, we just wanted to point out a subsequent event, so subsequent to 6/30 of '22, but prior to the report date, there were two draws on the state clean water revolving fund loan, one in July, one in August, of $4.5 million, and then $3.5 million on that loan. As Bill referenced earlier, these next few pages are our internal auditor's report on over financial reporting and compliance, and so what we have here are the findings that we have for the current year. A few notes before we go through them a little bit, is that in the prior year, if you remember, there were seven findings that we had. For this letter, in the current year, there are three, so that's a decrease of four that came off based on current year improvements, which is a positive thing, I think, for the board to hear. And so as we go through, if you have any questions, let me know. But page two starts the findings. 2022-001 material journal entries, I'm just going to read a little bit from the condition, which is basically why the finding occurred, I'm not going to read all of this. But basically, various financial statement amounts within the city's accounting records were recorded after year-end, some of which were proposed by the auditors. In addition, there were several revisions to the city's trial balance, with the final version coming early in December of 2022, each of which containing material corrections to the previous trial balance. The city has made improvements this year in recording material journal entries, but there were still several adjustments proposed subsequent to the commencement of audit fieldwork, and then referenced that this was a continuation of a finding from previous year. At the bottom, you'll see the next finding, 2022-002 payroll process. This also is a continuation from the prior year finding, but as it states, the city has procedures in place to ensure that employees are being paid at the correct rate, and for actual hours of hours worked, but much of the data entry for this process continues to be manual, and payroll can be submitted and paid before applicable department management reviews and approves their departmental staff payroll data. While no inappropriate transactions were noted during our testing of the payroll process, this is a systemic issue, and a similar issue was noted in the prior year. The next page, you'll see the third and final finding that we had, and this is a compliance finding, as we talked about the budget to actual, and is also noted on page 129 of the ACTFER. There were excess appropriations in regards to the final budget compared to actual expenditures, and that is basically what the condition stated, is that we noted that expenditures had exceeded the amounts of appropriated for various areas of the general fund and certain special revenue funds, and so this is where we documented that compliance finding for the current year. As noted, those are the three findings, and compared to seven in the prior year, that the material journal entries was a material weakness, the second finding in regards to the payroll was a significant deficiency, and then that third finding with budget to actual was a state compliance finding.
All right, we'll open it up for questions, but before I take from the council members, I do have a couple of questions for Ms. Kirkland. In looking at our budget amendment that was passed on 6/27/2022, the budget amendment does not comport with the 2022 CAFER final amended budget. Can you explain why?
Yes, let me first say thank you for having us here, and thank you for, Mayor, for doing a presentation. Truly an oversight on our behalf in the finance department, we're working very hard to make sure we stay on top of all of these things with our turnovers and things of that nature, but we will assure you that this will be something that we are working on, and we will not have this finding moving forward, we will be on top of it.
But how does that then reflect in the audit that was done? Because if I'm given a figure, and I'm using the attorney's office as an example, I'm given a figure of $3,964,101, but yet the amended budget and what was approved was $2,450,461, even though it shows that they didn't spend all of that, it's an error, it is not what their budget was.
Absolutely, and that's why we had the audit finding. It was an oversight truly in the finance department, we take full responsibility, and it is something that we are, a system that we're putting in place to watch the budget, monitor the budget numbers very closely for every department, make sure that the numbers are in agreement to what you all approved. It was an oversight on our part, and we're working to make those corrections.
And then looking at the Uniform Budgeting Manual, one of the things that is explicit in here is that the Budget Act requires budget amendments before, and that before is bold and underlined, any expenditures in excess of the budget are made. That didn't happen either.
You're absolutely correct, and again, we are working, just as we work to go from seven findings down to three, this is an area of focus for our team, and we are working...
But this is the second time this finding, it's a violation of the Uniform Budgeting Act.
You're absolutely right, and we are working to make the corrections. And I applaud my team, the finance department, we went from seven, we went from eight to seven, down to three, and this is an area that we're working very hard on, we've talked about it in cabinet, we've talked about it with the staff, we have people that are going to be monitoring, the accountants that are going to be monitoring the budget all along to make sure this will not happen again. I won't sit here next year having this same finding, that's the goal. So I assure you, it is something that we are totally aware of, and we are on top of it.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions, and then I have others as we move forward. Are there council members that have questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. So just trying to understand the significance of a few things. When our pension, the police, and the OPEB is funded at, for example, you said 49% and 56%, can you explain the significance of like that number in our short-term and long-term outlook?
So yeah, I think one of the things that, as we kind of look at those numbers or percentages, especially for the city, I know the state of Michigan has been working to get communities up to certain funded percentages, I think 60% is their goal for their pension systems. There actually is grant funding that's coming out from the state of Michigan that potentially could help out the city of being able to get their percentages up to at least the minimum of 60%. Obviously, like you were talking about, you know, what is kind of the long-term effects of being at that lower percentage, obviously those investment rates of return, you know, as you kind of obviously get up to those higher amounts, and you're able to have it more funded, is you're turning around more investment returns on those. And then obviously, you'll continue to put those dollars aside for those pension systems as you kind of go through that, but I think looking at that for the city in the current year, any of those grants from the state of Michigan would be something that could be beneficial.
Thank you, I kind of understand that, it sounds like we're supposed to be higher.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the minimum that they want for pension plans to be at 60% and OPEB plans to be at 40%.
And then another question, I think this may go to Ms. Kirkland. I noticed that our income taxes and our property taxes were over projected from the original budget, is that because of ARPA or something else? Because I know we were thinking that it was going to be like we were concerned...
The income taxes probably deal... The income taxes probably deal a lot with the collection or enforcement that our team in Treasury has done. With the state tapes, we went back several years to collect any funds that had not been received. So we have a lot of enforcement going on there. Property taxes, we're always conservative in our rate. And so if the state says it's going to be five or six percent, we try to be very conservative in those numbers and so that's what I would attribute those to.
Are you done, Councilmember Jackson? Other questions? Other questions? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Councilwoman President. This is for Ms. Desiree. With the expenditure that Councilwoman Wood was talking about exceeding, and you were working on it as far as the findings from eight to seven and now three. And as far as the finance department, my question would be, and I've had constituents ask, what is the priority or the first priority of the department if it's not the budget?
First priority would make sure that we have good accounting systems in place, internal controls, checks and balances in place, and those are priority. Making sure our general ledger system, that the information in the system is accurate, those are, that's a priority for us. One of the things that we're doing, and I think you all are aware of, that we're switching from one general ledger system to another one, which is going to help a whole lot. Our system is outdated. Some of the things that we would like to see in reporting is not available because of the current system that we're utilizing and moving to something that is more easy and provides the reports that we need and the accuracy is what our goal is. So a good general ledger system is definitely our goal and checks and balances.
Thank you so much. And then I have a question posed by Councilwoman Spitzley, asked me to ask the question in her absence. Her question is, "The city attorney, we have submitted a document to the state of Michigan that has an accounting error of approximately three point five million. We have been told by the finance director that no amendment to the document is needed. Are there any legal ramifications to have an official document that we know is incorrect submitted to the state? Do we have to certify that the document is accurate?"
So that's the first time I've seen that question. And I think that question needs to be directed, number one, to the finance director if there have been conversations with the state regarding that issue. First of all, is that statement correct?
The document, the, the audit report reflects what was in our general ledger. Unfortunately, there were things that we did not update as far as budget to action, budget to what was amended. But the audit report reflects actually what was in our general ledger at the time. So our document that is submitted to the state is not inaccurate. It's a reflection of what-
Okay, did the state tell you that?
Yeah, the state, what, all they ask is for a corrective action plan. What do we plan to do moving forward?
And we have that documented?
Yes, we do, and I provided that to council also.
Mr. Tucker, do you agree with that conclusion?
Yeah, I do. I think, you know, again, those, you know, getting the information from the finance director or department obviously is, you know, prevalent to how we're, how we're doing our audits. So having that information that's in the general ledger and that's what we're using to, to make that documentation is what is approved for the budget.
I mean, when you first look at Councilmember Spitzley's question, you know, just the general answer is if you submitted a document that is an error, you should correct it. But if the state is telling you and you have it documented that there is no need for a correction, then we need to see that.
What the state has asked us for is when our audit report has been submitted to them, they ask for what is our corrective action plans to addressing the audit finding. And we will submit what our statement is, as what I shared with you all, is that this will become a priority for us and we will be monitoring the budget on a regular basis and making sure that it reflects what has been approved by this body.
Yeah, but to be responsive to the council member's question, we've got to have this documented somewhere writing for-
Yes.
These are financial matters.
Okay, are there other questions in the body? I have a few that I'd like to talk about. First of all, Ms. Kirkland, are you aware of the audit that was done by our internal auditor on the human resource payroll process and procedures? That was done, the initial meeting with management was on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Preliminary draft was sent to the department on, on November fifth, twenty twenty-one. Additional feedback was received from the department on twelve, December tenth, twenty twenty-one. NAPAN review of the feedback and the human resource management. The final report was sent to council on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one with recommendations for a corrective action plan. Are you aware of that report?
I have seen that report, yes.
And are you implementing, or has human resources implemented any of the recommendations that came from the internal auditor?
I believe they have implemented what they could. I don't, I can't speak totally as to if they've done everything on that report.
Could you follow up on that and get back to us on that?
I'd be happy to.
Then my next question was in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, the city had one hundred and nineteen million in the general fund expenditures. And in twenty twenty-two, the city had a hundred and forty-six million in general fund expenditures. What do you attribute the additional twenty-two, twenty-seven million expenditures to?
That's a good question. I would have to get back with you on that. I don't know that off the top of my head what the crisis is related to.
You mentioned in the quarterly budget report that we received, that we were adding to the fund balance. It looks like it decreased by six million on page thirty-four in the budget, in the internal auditors, or external auditors' report.
Again, I don't have that information right offhand, but I'd be happy to provide it for you.
How has the audit impacted the current twenty twenty-three budget projections? And will we take six million more from the fund balance this year?
We're looking at the long-term projections. We have not totally analyzed that data as to where we are and where we're going. As you know, we have projected some deficiencies, but I'm not ready at this time to speak to that. But we are continuing to study those numbers and to look down the road as to where we will be.
Is there a plan for the seven point six million in the fringe fund balance that, or are you expecting to use it for unexpected costs for premium, for pensions or OPED?
I'm not sure what you're asking me, I'm sorry.
There is a fund balance on page one sixty-two in the, in the audit of seven point six million in the fringe benefits.
Okay.
How are you expecting to use that?
May I, may I get back with you on that also?
Is there a plan for the five point six million unrestricted reserves in the fleet?
That I'm not prepared to answer either. Sorry about that.
Why is the library rental line so far off? It was off by a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Maybe the auditors can help out with that. I don't know the answer to that.
Are you referencing, in the general fund, you're referencing that?
On page one hundred and thirteen, it has to do with the library fund. And I'm not sure, you were only given figures, so I'm not sure-
The library rental dollar amount, the, the budgeted amount?
Yes.
Yep. I know we do have a little bit of information on that, Tyler, if you wanted to take that.
Yep, so the budgeted and the actual amounts are based on the chart of accounts provided. And so these are grouped based on departments. And so there is a line item within the, within the number that's under library rental department that's estimated attrition, which is a, a debit balance or a credit balance of the budgeted amount, which is kicking that to a, a negative budgeted amount. But that's basically due to it not necessarily be allocating appropriate all the way to the departments and it just being one specific line item. But due to our requirements for groupings in regards to state requirements for the chart of accounts, it's grouped accordingly to the account number, which is within that subgroup.
Okay. Is the city on track for having the required uniform chart of accounts implemented by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
It's, it's interesting you would ask that question. We had that conversation earlier. We are working towards it. It would definitely require a conversation with the state of Michigan, with us implementing a new general ledger system, which is going to be eighteen months to two years. We can convert now, or we can see if they will allow us to give us additional time. So that's a question that we are talking to Treasury about right now.
So we were made aware that we had to do this back in?
This has been on, this has been ongoing with a lot of municipalities for years. This is nothing, yeah, we have been made aware of it. Our current general ledger system, we can spend the funds to do it right now and change one solution over, and then we'll turn around and spend more money when we do, when we switch over to BSNA. We're looking at both of them, weighing out what makes sense to the city. Of course, we don't want to spend money to do it right now to a system that is antiquated and then turn around and have to do it again. But we're going to do what's best for the city, looking at our budget and looking at the impact it may have on us. If we, if we're required to do it, we will definitely do it. If the state gives us additional time, then we'll see from there. But we are looking very closely at that, knowing that we're coming up against the deadline.
Okay. What has happened with the American Rescue Act interest? I'm assuming that we have invested those dollars, so where is the interest being shown?
Yes, the, the interest is, I'm sorry, let me cut you off, I apologize.
Go ahead.
The interest is still sitting in, we separate those pots of money. So the, the money is sitting in a couple of different institution, banking institution, and the interest that is being earned has not been moved to the general fund. But we, we can move that money anytime, but it would be made available to the city.
And what is the amount of the interest that we have currently?
I would be happy to provide that, I don't know off the top of my head.
What is the plan for the parking system? When we look at the fact that we're in a deficit with that, we continue to, which, you know, not that I'm against having parking holidays and, and Fridays and things like that, but the system is not paying for itself as it was intended.
I didn't, I don't have a plan or a comment on that at this point. I mean, is something, something that we could get back to you on?
Okay, we have a number of unanswered questions. And what I'd like to see is on February twenty-seventh, that you come before us with answers to those questions.
Sure, be happy to do that.
Yes, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
When we talk about the, the three findings, the third finding, the unfavorable budgeted variances, can you speak specific to which departments went over budget, the budgeted amount? Are you able to speak on that?
I think the auditors would be-
And what their correction, corrective action would be?
Yes, I can speak to which, specifically which departments. Point you, there is a footnote that I will point you towards. So it's page one twenty-nine of the ACFER, not that you need to go to it right now, but I can then list off. So within the general government, it's city clerk, library rental and mayor, public safety, fire, recreation and culture, debt service. Those are within the, within the general fund specific. Yep.
Okay. Was that all your questions, Councilmember Garza? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I've had, so my question would be, we receive a lot of, to you, Ms. Desiree, we receive a lot of federal and different funds for, as I guess, grants for services and things like that in, in the city from like MISHDA and HUD. Does the audit cover the compliance measures that we have to take to the federal and state level when we're receiving those, along with what's, what we're seeing here?
That is covered under the single audit that is done, that is being done right now. So it's not reflected in this audit report. It's a separate audit.
Okay. When is, when will that become available?
Excuse me, that's due to the federal clearinghouse on three thirty-one, based on your year end. It's nine months after your fiscal year end, and so that's due three thirty-one. So we're in the process with finance right now of working through those items and will be submitted prior to that required submitting to the federal clearinghouse.
Okay, thank you. And so we'll receive a copy of that prior to that date?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have a series of questions that we will have, and the auditors don't need to come back for that. But if Ms. Kirkland, at our Committee of a Whole on the twenty-seventh, we'll make sure that Sherri sends those out to you in an email and then we'll expect your presentation here at Committee of a Whole to those questions.
Okay.
All right. With that, we want to thank you for coming down, for answering our questions, and we will move on in our agenda. Unfortunately, I, we still don't have- Oh, okay, terrific, wonderful. We'll change chairs here. Thank you. Mr. Prosecutor, John, thank you for being here today. If you would make sure that the green light is on, on, on there, you'd be good to go. What we'd like you to do is spend a little bit of time talking to us about yourself and your vision for the prosecutor's office, and then we will open it up to council members for questions. So with that?
Well, first and foremost, I need to apologize to all the council members for being late. My office is in a little bit of a transition period and so my admin, my temporary admin scheduled me for five thirty and not five. So my sincere apologies to all of you.
That's, that's all right.
A little bit of background and introduction. Again, my name's John Dwayne, I'm the prosecuting attorney for Ingham County. I was appointed back in late December. I grew up in St. Joseph, Michigan-
I'm sorry, can you double check and make sure the green light's on?
Right here?
Yeah, you just might have to pull it closer.
Sorry, better?
There we go, yes.
All right. So I grew up in St. Joseph, Michigan, attended St. Joseph High School, graduated in nineteen eighty-eight. I attended the University of South Carolina in Columbia, graduated in nineteen ninety-two with a BA in English. Attended Thomas Cool Law School from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-eight. After obtaining my law degree and passing the bar, I worked for one year in legal aid down in southwestern Michigan. And then I went into private practice with my father's law firm in St. Joe for approximately two years. In two thousand and one, I was hired as an assistant prosecuting attorney. From that early inception, I worked in the family court division, the district court division, the circuit court division, the crimes against children's division. And then I became a unit chief of district court, circuit court. And in two thousand and twelve, I was appointed by- And in 2012, I was appointed by Stuart Dunning as the deputy chief. And I've served in that capacity for 10 years under three prior administrations, that being Mr. Dunning's, Governor Whitmer and prosecutor Carol Seaman. As far as my community involvement, I was an adjunct professor at Cooley, teaching trial skills for approximately six years. I was on the board and the secretary of the Ingham County Sobriety Court Foundation for approximately five years. I served on the Big Brothers Big Sisters Board for approximately five years. I coached youth football in Williamson for six years. I've been married for 20 years. My wife's a healthcare attorney and I have two children, boys. One attends the University of Michigan as a freshman and the other's a sophomore at Michigan State University.
Makes fun. Okay. With having that said, are there questions for the prosecutor at this time?
I can cover some of the policies as well that you were.
Okay, why don't you do that and then we'll take, take your questions.
Sure. First day of my office, my number one priority was to reduce gun violence in our community and in this county. It's at an unacceptable level at this time. And my office is committed to protecting the Ingham County residents from the upsurge in our gun violence. Several of the policies I implemented were to habitualize repeat offenders. So I am going to consider a person's prior felony conduct and their criminal history. I believe that's relevant to future conduct. I believe that repeat offenders have been given chances to reform and for some reason they have chosen not to. We are going to start charging individuals with what's called felony firearm. If you use or possess a firearm in the commission of a felony, that's a two-year mandatory prison term. I believe the use of a firearm in the commission of a crime, a felony, is extremely dangerous and potentially life threatening. We also are going to continue to charge felons, convicted felons who possess or use firearms. And last, I'm going to take a hard light stance on people that carry illegal guns, either on their person or in their cars, automobiles. The last three years in our county, we've seen over 1,000 cases of CCW that's carrying a concealed weapon. I would say mostly of that occurs in a motor vehicle. And it's my position that we need responsible gun owners, people that purchase their guns legally, register their guns, take their CPL classes, obtain their license. There's a criminal background check that's involved in that. And I'm not opposed to people that carry concealed weapons legally. I'm concerned of the people that are carrying illegal guns that are not supposed to be carrying those. These policies are not unique, they're not unusual. I believe probably 98% of the county prosecutors follow these types of policies. Any questions?
Okay, we'll open it up for questions. And I think Councilmember Jackson had his hand up and then Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you. From that last position, you mentioned CCW taking a stance in vehicles. Do you take into account all the people who are completely ignorant of the law? As far as they buy a gun, they say, I got it registered in my name, here's my paperwork. And then they have it not in a lockbox in the trunk away from all occupants, et cetera, et cetera. And also, when you talk about felony firearm, would you charge, can you charge felony firearm on a CCW, for example? Because you committed the crime of CCW carrying illegally with a firearm, opposed to like with a knife or something?
Yeah, with regard to the second question, you cannot charge a person with felony firearm for carrying a concealed weapon. By law, you cannot do that. With regard to your first question, as a prosecutor, we have discretion. And when we look at people that are doing the right things, they have their gun in their car, it's unloaded, it may be separate from their, from where they can access it. We take that as not as seriously as the other crimes we're looking at. So we have discretion when charging that and whether we charge or not. If somebody's doing all the right things, they just didn't get their CPL, I'll take that in consideration. What I'm concerned about as the prosecutor is repeat gun offenders carrying illegal guns in their car, guns with multiple round clips, so a 9mm with a 50 round clip, guns that are stolen, guns that have their serial number taken off. Repeat offenders who have been arrested, been arraigned, are out on bond and they go get another gun.
And another question, since it's a big push for taking guns off the street, illegal guns, and I see it from everywhere. At what point do you consider whether or not the gun was obtained from maybe an illegal search or an illegal, anything that's in violation of Fourth Amendment? And your assistant prosecutor who reviews the warrant and the police report, they see it. Do you still charge it and just see what happens or?
No, council member. If there is an illegal search, we're not going to charge that. I have a duty to look at whether or not evidence of the crime was taken legally. So if there was a violation of the Fourth Amendment, we will not charge that.
And, you know, because ultimately a judge decides if it was a violation, because there's a lot of in-betweeners. So is there going to be anything where, I mean, because frankly, you know, in my job, I still see a lot of cases where evidence at least appears or arguably is. So at what point does the, you know, do you decide that?
Sure, so if there's a question, we will meet as prosecutors and decide whether or not to issue it. If we feel there's a good faith base, based on probable cause, we'll issue the case. And as you know, as an attorney, that could be argued later in front of a judge and a decision will be made at that time as far as the legality of it.
And one more thing. So are you using discretion when you charge the felony firearm? Or are you like automatically charging it?
We can, well, we always use our discretion. So for example, if we have a person in a house and there's a Nighthawk patrol check or parole, excuse me, check, that person has a gun that's separate from, you know, under his bed or he's not even in the same bedroom, we'll look at that as whether or not we should even charge felony firearm. So there is discretion used in common sense.
Thank you.
We have Councilmember Hussein and Councilmember Garza.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. I kind of took an inventory of the different policies that Prosecutor Seaman put in place. And so I was curious, what would and what would not remain in place during your tenure? As an example, there was a officer involved shooting policy, where all those cases would be referred to the Attorney General. Is that still in place?
That is still in place.
Okay, fantastic. There was also a restricting and obstructing policy that was put in place that you would not prosecute or, you know, obstructing charges, resisting obstructing charges without, I think it was police camera video footage. Is that still in place?
That, so that policy still is in place. I'm going to review it to see whether it needs to be redrafted and an amended policy adopted. We do still review body cam videos with regard to resisting obstructing cases. But there are certain police agencies that don't have body cams. I believe Leslie and Stockbridge may not have them, so.
Okay, thank you. Also, and I don't know if this is policy approach, but there was this kind of second chance policy or approach that Carol Seaman implemented, that those that were charged even with the most heinous crimes were able to plead out and have an opportunity at parole and things of that nature. Is that the approach of your office now?
I take violent crime very seriously. For 10 years, I prosecuted murder cases. I've seen what murder can do to a family. So I take those cases very seriously, but we also use our discretion. So when you ask about second chances, of course, I look at second chances. I might look at specialty courts for second chances. We have a diversion program. But when it comes to violent crime, I'm very serious about that.
And then I think you answered this with regard to, you know, when we were talking about firearms. But there was a policy put in place by Prosecutor Seaman, where she would not prosecute crimes that resulted from traffic stops that were not public safety related traffic stops. What are you, what are you all doing with that?
I agree with, with some of that policy. There's a second version or a second part of that policy that indicates that if the person gave consent and there was contraband located, that we would not prosecute those type of cases. That has to be reviewed.
Thank you.
That takes us to Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. And just for clarity, because I think Adam asked a question that I, that I was getting ready to ask. So our previous, thank you for being here, first and foremost. But our previous prosecutor, Carol Seaman, I believe she put this in place like secondhand felony firearm. So, and I believe this is where Adam was going with it, is if somebody was to get pulled over and they were charged with drugs. And then in the process of searching their vehicle, they found, you know, an AK-47, you know, or an illegal firearm. It was my understanding that Carol Seaman wasn't going to charge for that, that gun felony firearm possession. What is your stance on that?
Well, there was several different variables that were in that policy. And so again, I'm going to review that with my, with my chief assistant and my deputy chief. Again, I disagree with some of that policy. I agree that law enforcement should not do pretextual stops. Okay, I'm on board with that. Again, it comes down to the matter of whether or not the person gives consent to search the vehicle and what contraband was located. Again, I'm very strong headed and supportive of reducing gun violence and taking guns off the streets.
Are there other questions? With that, I do have a couple of questions. And I heard your presentation a few minutes ago. And I think one of the things I'm extremely concerned about, and that is as a victim of crime and understanding what it does to the family. What is your stance with violent crime and how you deal with the victims of those crimes to make sure that their issues are heard and dealt with during the judicial system?
So our office has a crime victims advocacy group inside of the office. We have three people that work with victims. They provide the crime victim rights notification. They provide them to be able to sign on to Vine, which gives them notifications of when an inmate is either released or put on bond or their movement. They provide them the documentation to get restitution. They provide referrals for therapy. So we have in place a very dedicated victim witness coordination unit.
But what I saw from the past administration was decisions being made about prosecution without consulting the victims of the crimes and allowing them to know what was moving through the system. As you are well aware of, you went to work, there were protests outside the courtroom, courthouse from victims of crime. And so I'm trying to get an idea of where you are on that.
By law, we have an obligation and a duty to discuss with the victim possible plea negotiations. I have put out a directive to my assistant prosecutors that every, on every life offense case that I'll be consulted before any plea is made. And on every homicide, that I will personally meet with the victim's family for, before the first pretrial in circuit court. So we will discuss with the victims, the pros and cons and the strengths of the case. We will listen to what they want to do and how they want to resolve the case. Ultimately, it's our decision. But as I've indicated, and I think, I can't make this more clear, is I take violent crime very seriously. So I will typically defer on violent crimes to what the victim wants to see happen.
I think the last thing that I'd like to talk about, and that has to do with, again, as we're seeing some cases where you have the prison system looking at early outs for violent offenders and things like that. Has your office thought about whether they're going to intercede with some of those? Or especially on ones that have had a huge impact in, in our community?
So I think you're asking about parole reviews when somebody's eligible for parole?
Well, yes, yes. And, and the fact that there have been some cases that because of overcrowding and different things like that, that they've decided to reduce the sentences and.
So with regard to parole reviews, I'm contacted and have a right to give my opinion on whether or not a person should be paroled. So I look at those cases individually, look at the conduct, consult with the victim and make a recommendation. It's not to say my recommendation carries the weight of the day or not.
Right.
So to answer that question, as far as early release, I don't believe there is such a thing. We have truth in sentencing in Michigan. So if you receive 20 years on the minimum, you have to serve the first 20 years before you're eligible for parole. I do think there is going to be at some point in the near future, I don't know when, but some type of sentence reform. There's going to be some bail reform. I believe that's going to come in the near future, just looking at the horizon.
And I said that was my last question, but this is my last question. Working from a community background, oftentimes crimes that are committed out there don't just affect the victims, but affect the neighborhood. Over the years, we have had judges that have agreed, as well as other prosecutors that have agreed to have impact statements at the time of sentencing from neighborhoods to explain how this has impacted them as well while a judge is looking at sentencing. Is that something that you're amenable to?
Yes.
That was easy.
I just want to point out that I can't do this alone to reduce gun violence in our community. It takes everyone. It takes community leaders like yourself, it takes law enforcement. It takes other groups such as Advance Peace. We need to be collaborative on this effort. It needs to happen and I'm very serious about it.
Anything else in the body? Seeing nothing, we want to thank you so much for coming down here and answering our questions and giving us a glimpse into how you will be running your office. And I'm sure that if there are issues that come up, we'll be glad to give you a call. I know that on previous occasions, the Public Safety Committee, as well as council, asking the former prosecutor to come, which declined to come before us. I appreciate the fact that you're here immediately and wanting to work with us collaboratively. So thank you very much.
I'll appear whenever you need me to, to answer your questions and I won't be late next time.
All right, thank you. So with that, I don't, yes, Councilmember.
Since we have a little bit of time.
Yes, we do.
I have a few questions for Ms. DeSessa. And I told her I'd be asking these questions. So the first is that back on January 9th, we had our ARPA coordinator in, Daphne Woodfield. And one of the things she told us was that she was engaging applicants, I believe there were 40 applicants that were not successful in terms of applying for the ARPA funding. And she had said that at that time, she had actually personally engaged eight, but that she was actually going to reach out and talk to all 32 that remained, I'm sorry, and give them some measure of tailored feedback. She also talked about potentially helping them identify state and federal funding so that these programs that absolutely add value to our community, that they could potentially be funded. Do you know where she's at with that?
Not, not, I can't, if you're asking for a specific number, I don't have anything like that. But I can tell you that she is currently working on all of that right now as we speak. One of her biggest priorities obviously is to work with those that did receive some dollars. And so she's working with them to make sure that they, they complete their contract correctly and that they meet all the paperwork that perhaps maybe some of them are still in need of submitting. So she's working on that. That's her first priority. But city council, I guess the best, the best response to that is if you have anyone that, that we didn't, we're unable, we were unable to fund, please ask them to, to call Daphne. I will, I will be happy to give you her number so that you can call her directly and she can answer them. But please know that she is working with, with them right now and that is the status of that. So it's going to be an ongoing thing. I know that she has met with other individuals as well. And again, if there's anything or anyone specific that has a question, please don't hesitate to re-talk to her directly and I'll provide you with her number.
Okay, and then this might be a question for leadership. At the January 9th meeting, President, would you ask for respective notes and scores and? At the January 9th meeting, President, would you ask for respective notes and scores and outcomes? Did you receive those?
No, as a matter of fact, what I was going to announce after you were done is I'm going back to a procedure that we had when I was president before, and that will be on every committee of a whole agenda where we have asked questions and have not received the information. Those questions will be listed and the date that we asked for those, and those will be brought up at every committee of a whole until we get the answers that we're looking for. So, that was one of them, and that's a new process that we, we had done that before in trying to keep track of where the information was and when it was requested.
Very good, and I, you should be getting that information shortly. Again, just unfortunately, I've been working on some other stuff, and I know this is priority for, forgive me, please, but you will be getting that information shortly.
Okay.
Okay, and so, I also had a number of questions that dealt with public services in our presentation, but what I'll do is I'll hold off, since it sounds like we're going to start to list those. The only other one is, I've talked to probably seven applicants that were not successful. And one of the questions I think I received from three or four of those applications, or I'm sorry, applicants, was that, you know, they wanted to see the rubric. I shared the rubric, but one of the things, and I think it was a good point, was, I guess, one of the criticisms was why was that rubric not done before folks were actually submitting those applications? And because a lot of folks said that they felt it was unfair, that that was essentially been applied when they had no idea what was in that rubric. So, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, you know, the, the matrix of the rubric, as you say, was, was an afterthought. We were not really going to, we were not looking to put that originally. We were just simply, and I had put together an evaluation sheet of, that we could all take a look at. So, when we met with the city council, I believe he was recommended, so we started doing that. So, but please know that I did, as I put together the, the matrix, I made sure that much of the information that, or the questions that were in there were also questions that related to the application. So, I did send the, the matrix or the rubric to each of the city councils. So, you, you, you know what's in there, you have that. But again, it was not prepared ahead of time. But regardless, they stayed in line with the questions that had been asked in the application.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. In that same vein, there was questions asked, I think Ms. Daphne indicated that she was calling and asking follow-up questions to organizations. Were those documented to ensure that there was consistency? For example, if one agency was approved because she followed up and asked, you know, questions to get the information that they needed or documentation where another agency was not approved because maybe they were missing a document or didn't answer those questions to make sure that the overall was consistent and documented?
Councilman, let me, let me just clarify my response to that question. So, when we received, or when, when Daphne received the applications, she wanted to make sure that everyone had submitted as complete a report as possible and that all the questions were answered. So, she took it upon herself to call these individuals and say, you know, we still need this report, we need that. And, you know, and it was up to them to provide. We did our best to, to be fair to everybody. And again, this is just something that she took upon herself for individuals. And if they, if, if they complied or they listened, then yes, you know, we were able to receive. But she worked very hard with them so that they could all prepare a, an application that was, you know, well-done.
Thank you for that answer. Did you guys prepare, and I know, I guess, the reality is no appeals process where people felt like they had a fair chance, or they were saying, okay, well, maybe we didn't have a documentation, we didn't get an email, we didn't get a phone call, so we're given an opportunity to provide something to kind of appeal the negative outcome. Do you feel that, you know, there was good agencies who probably would qualify if they, you know, had a document or appeals process?
We, we do not have an appeals process. And we simply took it upon ourselves to make some recommendations as to what we thought would be the best applications. But I will tell you, city council, there were a lot of good ones, and we'd love to be able to provide or to fund everyone. Unfortunately, you know, we had 1.1 million, we had an ask of almost 18 million, and obviously, that was just not doable. But there were, there were no appeals. And again, the people that, that we did recommend, obviously, we wish that we could give them more because in some cases, we, we didn't give them everything they asked for, but we did give, give some.
Excellent. When the coordinator calls and follows up, I've heard several negative responses as well where people are just saying, I'm giving up with the city, I'm not going to apply or partner with them. And they do have great programs and services that are impacting our city in a phenomenal way. Do you have some type of, I guess, keeping track of what the response is, saying, hey, we talked to, you know, the 40 organizations and, you know, 30% were discouraged, 40% said they'll never apply again? Do you have something, so you're kind of gauging the temperature? Because I know that when Ms. Daphne was here, she said everybody was positive, and I just haven't heard it from the constituents, being at-large member.
Definitely, yes. Whenever we hear a, a concern, an issue of concern that's brought to us, yes, we, we're, we're keeping track of that so that we can do better next time. Obviously, we have a lot of ideas for, should an opportunity ever arise again to do things a little differently, like for example, the, the matrix, to put that ahead of time so that people can see that. That's something that we will, you know, put together, things, things of that nature, the questions, you know...
Would you be able to report that back to us? Because we've only heard everyone's happy and positive. Also, we received several agencies with HRCS the same response, like, oh, we've never been able to get through, or we have gotten through, it's been, you know, quite a headache, it's not worth it, and then no longer wanting to apply to partner with the city to deliver services to our constituents that are in most need.
Yes, yes, I'd be happy to, yes. Thank you, thank you. And again, city council, please, this was not an easy choice. I'm sure you'd be in the same boat as we were. We did our best to come up with, with a good recommendation to everyone. If we had enough money to give monies to everybody, I think that would be ideal. But again, I believe that we did our best, given the constraints that we had. And, and again, those that didn't qualify, we're hoping that they will apply again. And we are meeting with a few of them to make sure that if there are other opportunities for them to look at other entities and, or other ways of getting some dollars, we are recommending and we are meeting with them.
Well, I think every, thank you so much for that. I think everybody is aware that we have limited dollars. I think the concern from the constituents is that the same groups who might not be providing effective outcomes continue to be funded to produce those same outcomes that quite frankly are mediocre. And so, that's where I think people are getting frustrated and just in saying, I've been trying and trying, we're doing good work. And when it comes to the city, you know, whatever funding it is, whether it's ARPA or some type of human services or neighborhood grant, we are not getting the support that we need to have the resources to continue the work and, and the work that's working. And so, I think we know that, you know, there's 18 million, there's only 1.9. We know with HRCS and other funds, it's limited, as well as with the neighborhood grants. But I think the reality is, if you're looking at matrix and rubrics, are you looking at how do you have, or maybe, you know, if we have 100%, we give 25% to new agencies or give them an opportunity? Another thing that I've been hearing that's been quite discouraging is that we are only supporting agencies that are already funded as well. So, there's, I believe, inclusive, diversity, equity, inclusion, talking about being inclusive. If an agency is grassroots, they're doing great work, their costs are down, and maybe they only have $20,000 a year, you, they're saying, well, they won't give us 20,000 more or 30,000 because we don't have 100,000 to support a $5,000 grant. So, you're leaving out some of the greatest groups that are doing the work that are most connected because they don't have a million dollars already in the bank account. And that's been something they're talking about, not saying, well, we only have 1.9 million, so we understand there's not enough to go around. The reality is, who is it going to?
We understand, and that's something that we'll take a look at next time. Unfortunately, we just simply evaluated them. We took a, well, we used the matrix and we based our evaluation on that. And, you know, we, we made our best selection, but obviously, that's, that's something that we, that I'll talk to, to our staff and to the mayor and see if that's something we can do for next time.
Okay, and is that something related, I know ARPA dollars is one time, but like with Human Relations Community Services, are you all able to provide a report for maybe like the last 10 years to say, these are the agencies for the last 10 years, 90% have been funded for all 10 years, and we have 10% new agencies, and here's the outcomes?
I can check with HRCS and see if that report is available.
And are we doing, related to the funding and the grants? I've never seen where, let's say if we're giving it to agency A, B, and C, what is the actual outcome that they have achieved after we've given them the grant dollars? Is that available as well?
I will check with HRCS.
Thank you so much, because the groups, that's why they're getting discouraged, they're not seeing the outcomes, what the people are doing, and we have challenges that continue to increase in our community.
I understand, councilman.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Garza, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Jane.
Good evening.
Now, has all this money been allocated yet to the different nonprofits?
We have, we've simply informed them that they receive the dollars. And, and now we're meet, or we are, we're meeting with them so that they can comply with the, the rest of the requests, such as send up a contract so that they know when they're going to be receiving these dollars. So, it's not everyone yet, we have not distributed the monies, not 100%.
For, for instance, if, if one of these particular parties or multiple parties, for whatever reason, don't have all the ducks in a row, and the city decides to hold on to that money, hypothetically speaking, would you guys put out another request, application process? Or would you take that money and distribute it to the ones that were already...
That's a, that's a great question, councilman. I, I need to address that matter with the mayor, and I'll ask him how he wishes for me to proceed on that. But, but we will not release any dollars unless they sit down with us and set up the contract and the procedure for requesting those funds, because they will have to give us reports as well. This is required under, under ARPA, in which an entity that we give monies to, depending on the project again, they will have to provide us with some specific reports. But I will ask the, to see the mayor, I'll speak with the mayor and see what, how he wishes to handle that.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. In that same vein, I know in the past, working with our internal auditor, some of the contracts for grants and funding were inconsistent or not in a standard template. When you're talking about the ARPA funds to council vice presidents, a question, are the contracts going to be in standard fashion and everyone is meeting the same requirements across the board?
Yes, they, it is, it is one contract, it is the same for everyone. The only place that it could be different, it depends on what the funds are for. For example, if it's just a capital item, their, their reporting mechanism may be very quick. We just need to make sure that, you know, they, they provide us with the proper receipts. If it's for a service or something like that, then they'll have to provide us with a monthly report or something like that to show us how those funds were spent. And they must be done in accordance with what the contract stated. So, they're all, they'll, they'll have a little difference depending on the, on the service that we're, that we're asking to do, but, but they're all the same.
Is that something that you guys are looking at, making, you know, with all transparency available on? Like the website, when you have continued grants?
Yes.
Where people now can see the outcomes and the reports that are being provided?
Definitely, definitely.
Isn't that something that, that your guys are working on?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that does it. Do we have anything else? Seeing nothing, then we are...
I do have a question, I'm sorry. I apologize, councilman. May I ask a question to councilmember who's saying, I know you asked some other, other questions of me as well. I am prepared to answer those questions if you'd like.
Are those related to public, or I'm sorry, public services?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please do.
Yes, sir, I believe those are your questions.
If you wanted to just very quickly...
Yes, I'll be very, very quickly.
First state the question, and then, yeah, and then address the answer.
Okay, so these were some of the questions that you asked me, asked us to follow up regarding, well, various questions. I'd be happy to answer them. The first question was, Councilwoman Spitzley asked, asked our Public Service Director to have someone engage in a site visit to Cooper to take a look at the concerns broached by Stan Shuck on 1-9. And he asked for us to continue to do a follow-up on this, what was the outcome? Further, have we ensured that we are mandating that the final product is agreed upon the con, for the contract for chip and fog seals is what the city got before closing out the contracts? And did we work with OCA to determine whether there were performance standards that weren't met? So, the good, the response to that is, our Public Service Director himself did visit Cooper. He did see that there were more leaves in the gutter pan than gravel. This street, along with other streets that were chip and fog sealed last year, will be swept early in the spring so that we can prevent any remaining loose stones from moving into, into the storm stores. We are changing the contract language for this type of work so that future projects don't have this, the same type of issue. There weren't any performance standards that weren't met, so the company is, is fine. But we have let the contractor know that we are not pleased with the final product in several areas, and we are waiting for the response as to see how they will address these items. And in order to address this in the future, we will be working with our city attorney's office to make sure that that language is in the contract in the future. And just to answer some of the other questions, please know that the potholes on Sheldon have been filled. Unfortunately, this will not take care of this road, say, for a long-term basis. But again, we are looking to see whether or not we could implement a much longer-term fix sometime this year. When Ryan, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Cosco called him a few weeks ago, he did put into a request into the Lansing Connect so that they could check to see if there were any other requests. And based on his review, he did not find any, okay? So, that was, that was that. And then according to, I, I believe that Council President asked a question regarding the installation of a bump sign, and we are looking at that, Council President, and we'll be able to give you a better report shortly, but it is under review right now.
In, in respect to the company that did the chip and seal that we had, and because they didn't meet the expectations of the department, are you going to allow them to bid again?
That's a good question.
Yep, it is.
I will, I will go back and, and discuss this matter with our, with our director and our city attorney and see what, what is permitted, what is allowed. Because according to the review, this was not a standard that was in the contract. So, if we didn't ask, again, I, I don't know what kind of, if we should, if we should not allow them to, to bid next time if this wasn't in there already. Am I making sense? Does that make sense to you? Okay.
Council, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to follow up on, I just want to make sure I understood you correctly.
Okay.
Regarding how you said Director Kilpatrick stopped out on Cooper Road and noticed there was an abundance of leaves and less than, I think you said...
Yeah, he said there were more leaves in the gutter than, than gravel.
Okay, so, so my understanding from that meeting, I think it was one of our constituents, Stan Shuck, that got up here, he mentioned that Route 16, I believe is what it was, not just Cooper Road.
Okay.
Yeah, Route 19.
Route.
Route 19. That, that there's, I think he believed, I believe he said he picked up like five gallons of, of stone in his, in his gutter pan. Now, he also reached out to us and said that they still have not came by and swept that up. Did I understand you correctly that they won't be out there till spring?
That's correct.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll also look, do some follow-up also on, on Route 19 and see how, how bad that is. And if we can go earlier, again, I'll speak with our Public Service Director.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not sure what Route 19 is. I know he used to work for public services, so obviously, he understands that. But I can attest that North Route in Washington, there is a huge amount of, of stone that is getting kicked out, kicked over cars and into people's yards.
Thank you, councilman. I will look into this matter further. I'll discuss it with our Public Service Director. And I know that if, if we can do this sooner, we will.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. You, you made a comment about this contractor that we didn't have specifications about this, and would they be able to rebid based on Councilwoman Wood's question? My question would be to you, if you have a professional organization that knows that this is going to hinder if you don't go back over the road in a certain amount of time, and they went way beyond the time, it seems like they're not going above and beyond to operate in excellence. So, what is your thoughts or position on that as far as regardless if it's in the contract, if it's not best practice or standard?
Understand, councilman.
It seems like that we were, you know, in some other city or project was, was a priority versus what we paid for.
You bring, you bring up a good concern, you bring up a good issue. Obviously, when, whenever I work with a, with a contractor and if there's something that I over, did not see or whatever, and it happens later, and I work with this contractor and, and they're able to address it, you know, promptly, even though it wasn't in the contract, then that's something that I do take into consideration. So, if it's, if this, now this, please know that we are letting them know about this issue, and we've not received a response. We've expressed our, our displeasure with this. So, we've given that, we've, we've given up that information now to date. We don't have a, a plan or a response for them. So, again, it's up to the director to see how he's going to handle this. But obviously, this is something that, that he may take into consideration since they, they didn't reply to our customers.
Well, this is taxpayer dollars, and I understand it's up to the director, but it should be in a strong standpoint. in a strong standpoint, you know, stance from the beginning, once we see this is a problem and people aren't responding, to, you know, to, so the people know that they're not left behind and this issue is serious and that as a city, we care and we're being responsible for taxpayer dollars.
I understand completely, sir. I know that obviously, performance is something that's important when we take a look at our contracts. And again, I will discuss this matter with our public service director and with our city attorney to make sure that if, if we go back and we ask them to rebid, is this something that we can take into consideration? I'll work on that.
Thank you.
I know this is not a good answer that you're looking for, but we'll do our best to get this corrected. Thank you.
Hey, councilmember Garza, Vice President Garza.
I think I better be quiet.
Three to forty days.
Yeah. So, last question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, do you have the name of the contractor? And if so, are they local? If they're not local, are they at least from Michigan?
That I don't know, but I will be able to provide that to you shortly. I can ask real quickly. I don't have the name, but I'm pretty sure they're local. And I, again, but I will, I'll get that to you quickly.
All right.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Your Honor. I was not prepared for that question.
Okay. I think that does it.